Pursuant to Section 84-14 of 11 of the Nebraska statutes, notice of this meeting was given on November 3rd, 2017. The meeting will convene at 6:05 PM and visitors may obtain a request to be heard from staff for any presentation they may have for the meeting. In accordance with policy, the request to be heard forms must be submitted to the secretary within the first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president, so please attend the entire meeting to ensure you're able to hear any discussion. Pursuant to Section 84-14-11 of the Nebraska statutes, the next meeting of the Board of Education of Douglas County School District 001, which will be a workshop, will be held on Monday, November 20th, 2017 at 6:00 PM in the board meeting room of the Teacher Administrative Center, 3215 Cumming Street. The agenda will be kept current and available for public inspection in the Office of the Secretary of the Board of Education at the Administrative Building during regular working hours. Pursuant to Section 84-14-12 of the Nebraska statutes, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted in the board meeting room on the north wall. Please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Vice President Snow will now lead us in the OPS Vision and Mission Statement.
Thank you. I will begin with the vision. Every student, every day, prepared for success. And the mission, Omaha Public Schools prepares all students to excel in college, career, and life.
Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Here.
Gadding.
Present.
Holman. America.
Present.
Pearlman.
Here.
Ryan.
Here.
Scanlon. Snow.
Here.
Williams. Six present.
All right, and Dr. Holman and Ms. Williams let me know that they were not going to be able to attend the meeting this evening, and Mr. Scanlon let us know that he was going to be running a little bit late, so I would entertain a motion to excuse their absences.
So move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to excuse the absences of Dr. Holman, Ms. Williams, and Mr. Scanlon until he's able to arrive. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Gadding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Six out.
Motion carries. We will move on to our OPS Proud Spotlight, and Mrs. Monique Farmer.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, Superintendent Evans. Our OPS Proud Spotlight tonight is on Burke High School senior Tristan Sims. Tristan was recognized this fall as a National Hispanic Scholar. He was selected by the College Board for scoring in the top 2.5% among Hispanic and Latino preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship qualifying test takers. Tristan has also been involved in Boy Scouts for 12 years, and he is currently finishing up his Eagle Scout Award project, which entails creating neighborhood libraries. In addition, Tristan is involved with Burke High's Focus Program, and he's been involved with the district's Focus School Pathway since the third grade. We salute Tristan Sims and give him a round of applause, please, for his outstanding academic achievements, and then I'd like to invite, for now, Burke High School Principal Galan into the podium for some brief remarks.
Good evening, and I'm proud to introduce Tristan and his mother, Michelle Duran, and he has a little sister Jade here with him, so he's setting a great example for her. But Jade is just one of those solid individuals in our building who I would actually kind of describe, he flies under the radar, but being in our Focus Program this year as a junior and a senior, I think what I've noticed from him and what his teachers say about him is he's beginning to blossom and step out of his comfort zone, so we certainly want to encourage that. But he's also just quite humble, which can be a very nice quality as well, but if I could ask Tristan to come to the podium and be recognized, I'd like to do so. Tristan, if you'd like to say anything or share any words about Burke High School?
I do not have anything to say. I don't, I'm not good at this. Thank you for the recognition.
[laughing].
Speaking to the mic.
See what I mean? We'll work on that, but yeah, just one of our solid individuals there at Burke High. Very proud of his score on that PSAT, again, top 2.5% of all Hispanic/Latino scholars across the country, so that's quite an accomplishment.
Any questions? Oh, you don't get to sit down yet. Are there any board members that have questions or comments? Mrs. Gadding.
Well, I had an opportunity to visit with Tristan before the board meeting started, and I just want to echo what his principal has said about him. He was just very humble and very thoughtful in his comments, and so I appreciate that. Good job, I mean, how exciting, because it's a lot of work. Did you study quite a bit ahead of time?
I did not, actually. I mean, I did study, but not extensively.
Okay, that's impressive. Okay. That's great. Well, thank you for being here and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations, and we would like you to come around so we can all shake your hand and congratulate you. And then I believe we would like to get a picture here in the center, too. All right, again, congratulations, and thank you for stepping outside of your comfort zone and coming here and being recognized at the meeting tonight, because it's a very, very worthy accomplishment. We will move on to board and superintendent communications, and first up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. Several good news pieces. I want to start off with, since we have folks from Burke High here, we have a huge game this Friday night where our Burke High Bulldogs will play the North High Vikings. That's going to be at Kinnick Stadium on Friday, I believe at 7 o'clock, that correct Gay, 7 o'clock at Kinnick Stadium, and the winner of that game goes on to the state championship game, so we know that there's going to be an OPS school in the state championship game, which is on November 21st at Memorial Stadium at 7 o'clock, so mark your calendars, it's going to be a great, great game, and I think probably down to the last play would be my guess, so great, great, great team, so good news there. Other things I wanted to share, we had a Omaha Public Schools Foundation silent auction last night, and it was a full house with lots of participation and lots of fundraising activities, so just wanted to thank all the Schools Foundation individuals that worked on that. I think it was a great night. Also wanted to mention that we've had three community meetings on the bond issue, and I know we've still got some more board meetings to continue looking at the Phase 2 bond issue, but we are moving ahead on collecting community input, collecting board input, moving closer to a date in the future for the board to actually vote on resolution language, which will probably be sometime in December is my guess, is what it looks like right now as we work through that process. Couple of other dates to put on your calendar, this Saturday, the 11th, the State of North Omaha and particularly North Omaha Education will be at North High in the Viking Center Saturday morning at 8 o'clock. It's an opportunity for us to talk about what we're doing in our schools, and I know that myself and Lisa Utterback and some of her team, as well as several other of our staff, will be there presenting for the State of North Omaha on Saturday, the 11th, and on, well, I guess that would be it, on Saturday, November 11th. And then just the last thing, I'll end with just a little good news, personal news, I've been out of the office, took a few vacation days, my wife and I are now grandparents and had our first grandchild, granddaughter, and we're pretty tickled and excited, to be quite honest, and we hope that she's as smart as that young man right there when she grows up and does as well as he did, so, but thank you, everybody, and thank the board for allowing me to take some vacation days to get to go and be there during that birth of our granddaughter.
All right, do we have any board members that have reports they would like to share? Mrs. Gadding.
Well, I was honored to be able to attend the Burke High School 2017, I'm going to read this, AP Scholars Tea, which honored 43 AP Scholars here a few weeks ago, and so it was just a true delight to see all the kids and their parents, and it was a very well-done event, so I want to thank Burke for inviting me and allowing me to be a part of that.
Mrs. Cassidy.
Well, I had the chance, these last couple of weeks that we haven't had a meeting, I did a couple of fun events at some of my schools. First, I want to give kudos to Bancroft Elementary. I had the privilege of serving lunch. They were a gold award school, so I served lunch with some of our fine OPS executive directors, which was a fun time, and it was great to see the energy in that school, just a great job that they've, what they've accomplished there. Second, I went to a robotics tournament hosted by South High School. There were 39 schools in attendance, several were OPS, there were schools from all over Nebraska and Iowa. Never really been to a robotics tournament, so that was kind of new, no idea how they scored those crazy robots, but it was fun to see some of OPS's finest students excelling and, you know, really getting in there and doing what they do with those robots, so that was fun to see. Third thing is kind of an announcement, kind of a, I guess, I told my school here that I'd pass this on, I visited Castalar Elementary this week, and with conferences coming up, they are doing, apparently this is something that they've hosted several times in a row, they are holding a community-wide garage sale specifically for their school, but they kind of open it up, too, if they have people in the community, so they wanted me to share a little shout-out that anyone can come and donate household goods, household items. Let's see, she told me anytime, Monday through Wednesday, from 8 o'clock to 4, if anyone wants to drop off any items to the main office. All proceeds go back to their school, I think they're going to put them towards their PTA, and I'm not sure what the funds will go towards, but all going back to the school, so shout-out to Castalar. Thanks.
Ms. Ryan or Mr. Pearlman? Okay, I'll give my brief update. Someone, Mrs. Cassidy, head of school, asked me to share some information. Coming up this Thursday, November 15th, from 5 to 8, during parent teacher conferences, Chandler View is going to be having a pasta feed and I think some silent auction and raffle activities to support one of their students who was diagnosed with cancer over the summer, so if you're able to go, I encourage you to go and help that school support one of their families through a difficult time. A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Snow and I were able to attend and speak at the Grassroots Leadership Development Program, which is a program that OPS does for high school students to learn about leadership qualities, learn about government and being involved in the community, and so we talked to them about being school board members and getting involved in the community and what it's like to run for office, and they also gave us feedback on qualities that they would like to see in the next superintendent. So I know Mr. Snow took note of those and was going to bring those to the next committee meeting, and most of them were in line with the things that we had established, so we had a fun conversation with them. And then, kind of on the more fun side, over the weekend, I have to say thank you to the head of our JROTC program, Lieutenant Colonel DeBolt, because he connected me with the National Guard to take part in an educator flight this weekend, where essentially we flew in a Blackhawk helicopter to Lincoln and then spent some time learning about educational benefits that students can receive if they join the Guard, but also educational programs that the Guard can come into schools and do. Like, for example, they presented an anti-bollying program to all of the freshmen at Central this year, so it was a really good opportunity to learn about different opportunities that are available that I hope are going to be shared out to everyone in our district. Mr. Snow.
Madam President, just to let you guys know, this week I started my seventh, I took on my seventh mentor at King Science Middle School, so every Wednesday, if you guys have an opportunity and you want to mentor some students, there's a program called Reach and Rise, and it's starting at King Science right now, and you can go there and you can do group mentoring with some of their students in their after-school program. Also, last week I had an opportunity to attend Skinner's PTA meeting as well as their parent game night, and they also fundraised $1,000 for one of their parents that was dealing with cancer. And about, I believe, last week or the week before, I attended the Seventh Annual Climb Higher Luncheon, and a shout-out to Howard Kennedy that was recognized during the luncheon, and a lot of the funds and a lot of the work that they do at outer-bound helps students in Omaha Public Schools, especially the students at Howard Kennedy Elementary, so kudos to Mr. Gunner. Also, I brought back from a conference some poetry from Cleveland Public Schools, as well as some weights for the board members, paperweights, I believe, and they're actually designed from their art and design academy students and they're engraved and stuff, so I have many of these to pass out, and I actually have some for those that might want them in the audience as well. I could see the enthusiasm back there. And also, last week, Dr. Holman and myself had an opportunity to attend North High's Robotic and Engineering Program and had their students do a demonstration for us, and that they're gearing up to try to get a chance to go back to China and compete again in robotics. I do not understand the scoring. No, I didn't. Thank you. Oh, and we have one other thing, and actually, I'm going to let our president present this to our superintendent, Grandpa Evans, or what I would call Paw-Paw Evans. You got to open it, and this is from the entire board. Yeah, for that. So while you're holding your granddaughter during basketball season, you can put her in one of those and cheer on the football, I mean, the basketball team, I apologize. You're welcome. Thank you.
All right, with that, we will move on to public comment. Now my computer's caught up. We have, Mr. Ray, do you have any additional forms? Okay, at this time, we have six speakers who have submitted request to speak forms. The board has adopted Policy 8346, which provides public comment for a period of one hour, and that same policy limits individual speakers to a maximum of five minutes. We ask that you respect that time limit, and Mr. Ray will let you know when you have one minute remaining and when you have 30 seconds remaining. We understand that people have strong feelings about the issues they come to speak about, and so we ask that you respect the opinions of all who speak and that you refrain from applause or other outbursts during presentations. If the subject of your public comment is related to a particular student or staff member, we ask that you please do not mention the student or staff member by name and instead provide that information to Mr. Ray so we can look into those types of specifics. If you do have any type of written commentary, please give that to Mr. Ray, and he will distribute it to the board. And as a reminder, we please ask that you spell your name and state your address before you begin your public comment. It is now 6:25 PM, and our first speaker is Barbara Nitzel.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Nitzel, N-I-E-T-Z-E-L, and I live at 14452 Burdette Street, Omaha, 68116. I currently have a daughter receiving special education services in the transition program. I want to discuss the need for a new transition site to take the place of the Paralyzed Veterans Association, known as the PVA, but a little background first. In the last school bond issue, there was nothing listed for transition program improvements, specifically a new building to replace the use of the Paralyzed Veterans Association. The need of a new site was brought to the board's attention before the allocation of funds. Board members assured us that it would be reviewed, yet upon finalization of the bond issue, there were no accommodations for transition. This oversight again was brought to the board's attention, and we were told they forgot about it, but assured us they would address it in the next bond issue. Here we are, next bond issue, and no mention of appropriation of funds as of yet. Do you know, there are 166 individuals in the transition program. This is broken down to five in the Project Search Program, 50 at the South Site, which is at capacity, 41 at the TAC Building, which is up from 35 last year, leaving 70 at the PVA. Thought needs to be given to the growth and the number of this program and the limitation of space at both the PVA and the TAC Building. There's an attached sheet showing you the numbers of growth over the last five years. This being said, I have to discuss my disappointment in the learning environment of the PVA. First and foremost, there are a number of limitations with the space. OPS is at the mercy of how PVA will let them use the space. The rooms are used for classrooms during the day, are used for other functions in the evenings and weekends. This does not allow for learning materials to be left out. Everything needs to be locked up so it doesn't disappear. Every evening and morning, the teachers and paras are wasting time, making sure everything is put away or taking stuff out. At the end of the school year, the teaching materials and supplies need to be removed from the PVA. Teachers are taking all the stuff home to store it. Nothing can be put on the walls, so visual materials that can be posted in a typical classroom environment cannot be posted at the PVA. The cafeteria starts out as a classroom in the morning, is turned over to a lunchroom, and then turned back over to a classroom. This is all done by the teachers and the paras. The teachers and paras serve the lunch and clean up. I have to ask- I have to ask why? Their job is to teach. This takes away time from their teaching to the kids. There are no lockers for the students to put backpacks so things go missing. They don't have a computer lab. This automatically denies students access to the use of technology as a learning tool. The life skills apartment is not big enough or arranged in a way to be conducive to teaching the daily living skills. Also, due to lack of space at the PVA, the main room of this apartment room, classroom, is set up for other subjects. So students are transported to a house at 33rd and Burt Street. What a waste of time shuttling students back and forth. This again is a loss of learning time. What a waste of transportation resources. And in my view, I think the 33rd and Burt Street House is being used to get bodies out of the PVA because they can't handle that number of kids. So I question, why isn't another transition site being sought out to accommodate the needs and the purpose of the transition program? Specific classrooms for teachers where materials do not have to be unpacked and packed every day? Place for coats and backpacks and purses to be put so they're not lost? An actual cafeteria that doesn't constantly have to be rearranged? A computer lab? And a life skills space onsite so students do not have to be shuttled to another location? I look at transition as a form of glorified babysitting. PVA provides very little except a place where the students can go. OPS espouses every student, every day, prepared for success. Students are greatest resource, our greatest responsibility. At Omaha Public Schools, we prepare our students for life in a world where understanding and appreciation of diversity are essential. In closing, I'll leave you with this quote from Kofi Annan. "Disabilities are yet another manifestation of adversity. Let us always be committed to the fundamental principles of dignity and equality for all human beings." If OPS is to live up to its mission to serve every student every day, then it needs to abandon the current PVA site for improved, for an improved site that can accommodate the learning needs of these students and for future growth. Please don't let these students down any longer. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Mary McHale.
My name is Mary McHale, M-C, capital H-A-L-E, and I live at 5009 Idza Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68132. I'm also speaking for Chelena Perkins, C-H-E-L-E-N-A, P-E-R-K-I-N-S, 2011 North 124th Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. And for Kayren, K-A-Y-R-E-N, Oiler, O-Y-L-E-R, 7810 Vane Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68122. As always, I thank the OPS School Board members and OPS staff for all you do for the students of OPS. I'm here to talk yet again about the transition program, which has approximately 166 students in 33 locations who receive special education services between 18 to 21 years of age. The purpose of the transition program is to provide the students with job and life skills trainings. As there are many new OPS board members, I have a concern about this issue and do not want the same thing that happened at the last bond issue to happen with this one. With the last bond issue, I attended the community meeting at Burke and brought to the attention of my school board rep that there was nothing listed for the transition program on the possible list of buildings, land to be voted on for improvements. I also spoke before the OPS School Board about this omission. I was thanked for my comments, and the OPS Board stated that they would address it. When the 2014 bond issue was approved and the plan for renovation were published, the transition program was not on any of the plans. When I spoke in front of the OPS Board about this omission, the Board stated that they had forgotten about it. Wow. Honka School was on the 214 bond issue, approximately 140 students, pre-K to sixth grade? That school wasn't forgotten. JP Lord School, which serves approximately 100 students with disabilities, was on the 2014 bond issue? That school wasn't forgotten. Don't the students in the transition program deserve the same consideration? I was assured that if there was another bond issue, the transition program would be a part of it. I attended the community forum at North High School on October 23rd, 2017, and much to my surprise, no mention of the transition program in Phase 2 of the bond issue. It would appear as though the Board is more concerned with making sure that the schools with portables are updated so that portables are not a part of the school, rather than what happens for the, for the transition students. As I have stated before, I urge all board members to go and visit all three transition sites, if you haven't done so already. When Mr. Pearlman was running for office and going door-to-door, he was lucky enough to get me at home, and I mentioned my concern about special education and for the transition program. And he remembered me when we were at a CAC meeting. I'm sure it's not because I was extremely good-looking, but because of my passion for the transition students and for them having a good experience. So the transition program has increased 56% since the 2013-14 school year and continues to grow every year. At PVA Transition, which has 30 students a school year, students attend classes sitting in extremely crowded conditions. They sit cheek-to-cheek, and not in a good way. The PVA staff will have to, has to set up and put away all materials used for instruction every day. This is a waste of those staff's time and energy that could be better spent on educational outcomes for the students. They can't have a laptop cart, as there is no room to store it. This provides, deprives the students of the technology that is used in the present day. Would this happen in a jet-end classroom? At the end of each school year, there isn't enough room to store all the materials used throughout the school year, so staff has to find a room for them, basically taking home and storing them at home. There are 41 students, teachers and staff in one classroom at the Career Center, with students coming in and out of the classroom. How do students learn with all that disruption? The only bright spot in all the three sites is the South Transition, which is a new site. It's new and has plenty of storage. The extremely good news is that the South Transition Site can only have 50 students, which only means that PVA Transition will continue to expand. When the South Site opened up in October 2016, I put my son's name on the list even though it was farther from our house, which would mean a long bus ride, but because of the crowded PVA conditions. All the transition staff provide excellent services to the students, but the classroom settings are not acceptable at PVA and Career Center. If these students were general education students in this, in school, the cynic in me thinks that these conditions would be rectified within a matter of months. PVA Transition is more crowded than a portable. Why does the district think that it's acceptable for the students receiving special ed services to attend class in this setting? OPS vision, every student, every day, prepared for success. It'll be too late for my son, as he will age out of the transition program in May 2019. Don't make it too late for those other students in the transition program who deserve the same outcomes as the general education students. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Kyle Hesser.
My name is Kyle Hesser, K-Y-L-E-H-E-S-S-E-R. I'm at 8713 Top 164th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68136. I am an OPS School Psychologist. Good evening, Board, and Mr. Evans, congratulations on your new granddaughter. Every year, the National Association of School Psychologists designates once, one week as School Psychology Awareness Week to provide information about the roles of psychologists in the school setting. This year, that week is November 13th through 17th. So it's my pleasure, on behalf of the staff of Psychological Services, to briefly speak to you tonight about the support we provide to students, families and staff in our district. School psychologists are uniquely qualified to address the needs of our students in schools because of our expertise in both education and mental health. We have extensive training in child development, including cognitive, socio-emotional and behavioral skills. This training puts us in position to be an invaluable resource, teachers and administrators, as they deal directly with, with ever-increasing demands in their buildings, such as poverty, mental and behavioral health issues, bullying, homelessness, cultural and linguistic diversity. In OPS, we pride ourselves on diversity, and we should, but we also recognize that students who live under adverse social conditions or who are, or who are from culturally and linguistically diverse backgrounds may have additional needs that schools sometimes struggle to address. In 2015, about 20% of children under the age of 18 were living in poverty. 1.3 million public school students were homeless, and 4.6 million were English-language learners in the United States. In addition, recent trauma research is shedding light on how adverse, adverse childhood experiences or ACEs affect brain development, which also impacts cognitive, social and behavioral functioning. According to the CDC in 2013, 13 to 20% of children in the United States were suffering from mental disorder, and the prevalence of those disorders are increasing. It is clear that schools are facing more challenges to meet the needs of their students. School psychologists can serve as a resource for all of our students and staff. We're available to support, to provide support for students, families and staff whenever challenges affect a child's success. In OPS, we consult with teachers, administrators and support staff. We're part of the MTSSB and Student Assistance Teams. We provide direct services to students and evaluate some students for special education services. We assist with interventions and IP planning, including conducting functional behavioral assessments and developing behavior intervention plans. We're also part of the District Response Team, which assists buildings when a student or staff member dies. The profession of school psychology continues to explore how the challenge, how the changing social, economic and cultural landscape affects children in the school setting. Due to many factors, school psychologists are faced with ever-increasing duties to, in order to meet the needs of students. I would like to thank the Board for their support provided to our department as we continue to expand our roles to help the students and families in Omaha Public Schools. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and thank you on behalf of the Board to all of our school psychologists for the work that goes on in our buildings in our district every day. Our next speaker is Matt Freeman.
Good evening. My name is Matthew Freeman, M-A-T-T-H-E-W-F-R-E-M-A-N. I'm at 5212 North 126th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68164. First of all, I'd like to thank you for taking the time to hear us regarding the second phase of the bond issue, specifically about how a far northwest high school could look like. I know that it isn't always easy to hear, hear and sit and listen to constituents talk about things, and I, I really appreciate your time for taking that, to be, to be here present, and I hope you find my words encouraging. My son, who is a third grader at the Fullerton Magnet Center, quite simply loves his school. He loves every one of the teachers. He loves the paras, he loves the principals, everybody. And throughout his time there, and I think that has a lot to do with what OPS is doing right. In a few years, there's a possibility he may get to attend a far northwest high school, and I certainly hope he does. What plans I have seen for it so far, it looks like the school will be something truly special. But tonight, I ask that the Board consider the addition of a pool and stadium as something that is important as well. I feel the factors on whether families decide to stay in the district or not, and I believe that these are factors that make us competitive with the school districts that directly surround us. Maybe having these things won't directly affect my son, but maybe they will. But it isn't just about my child, it is about every child that passes through the doors of their OPS school every day, to learn many things that will help them become outstanding grown-ups someday. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Our next speaker is Chad Thiessen.
Greetings to Omaha School Board. My name is Chad Thiessen, that's T-H-I-E-S-E-N, and my address is 5109 North 126th Avenue. That's here in Omaha, 68164. I would like to address this Board regarding the bond for a new far northwest high school. My son is a third grader at Fullerton Magnet as well. Our family loves this school and are very excited about his progression through OPS District. Our concern is that the second bond is not passed. Our third grader will be shuffled into a very good, yet overcrowded, high school. As it stands now, the two high school students in West Omaha have to go to our very crowded and Burke's enrollment has been capped. I think the new far northwest high school is a must for our school district. Furthermore, the new high school should have all the amenities that OPS families have come to expect, including a football stadium and a pool, so we can be competitive as a high school option compared to Bennington, Elkhorn and Miller's Health, or Miller's School Districts. I believe, excuse me, this new high school being built is the only way to accommodate the growth, growing population and growth of our city. OPS curriculum and programs are excellent. We just need the accommodations for our kids to learn, play and grow and prepare for their future. Thanks for your time.
All right, thank you. Our final speaker tonight is Elizabeth Richardson.
My name is Elizabeth Richardson, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S-O-N, and I live at 13520 Boyd Street. I am a junior at Burke High School. I'm here to tell you why I support the bond towards a new high school and to tell you why my first two high school's choices were not OPS schools. My first choice of high school was Millard North because their IB program and the reputation for being an amazing school with opportunities, especially for future pre-med students. Millard North would have saved me an hour of day travel time compared to going to Central. Also, I am a competitive swimmer, and Central does not have a pool. They have to use a middle school pool, which is kept too warm for competitive swimming. For some perspective, imagine basketball players practicing at a gym that's 90 degrees. My second choice was Westside because they had new Apple laptops for every student and their pool and championship history was very appealing to my swimming career. Both Millard North and Westside offer Latin, which was, which I would take to prepare me for medical school, and is not offered at Burke. I am currently attending Burke, which is my home school, and as much as I love Burke, there are some things that cannot be ignored. One is the Language Department and how it is not a priority at Burke. The Chinese classroom is literally, is literally a closet, and there is not enough top-notch teachers in the Language Department to adequately prepare us for college. Although we were promised one-to-one laptops last year, we still do not have them, and some OPS schools are even further behind than Burke. Burke is a very overcrowded school. I must go to a portable once a day, which may not seem bad, but imagine walking outside when it's snowing and below freezing. Also, every single one of my classes is at capacity, and every desk is filled. Another problem is that I cannot practice on my high school swim team until 4:30 at the earliest, because several middle schools must use Burke's pool since it's the new, since new OPS middle schools do not have pools. But my situation isn't the worst. The Central swimmers must go to Norris every day to practice. There is a real issue in OPS when it comes to pool space. That is why I believe there should be an emphasis on the new, on the new high school having a swimming pool. I speak today because although I do not, I did not originally want to go to an OPS school, I have learned to love OPS and Burke. I want future OPS students to proudly choose an in-district high school, and with correct changes, I believe OPS schools could be viewed just as highly as Westside and Millard. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you to everyone who came to speak at the meeting tonight. To give you a heads up, we don't have bond issue specifics on our agenda tonight, so it's not something that the Board we can speak about, but we are currently in the middle of individually and in small groups going through the feedback that was received from the community input session, feedback that has been sent in, and then our November 20th workshop, the topic will be the potential bond issue. So please stay tuned and come to that meeting or watch the livestream of it. All right, we will now move on to our consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda before us.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Ryan. Are there any abstentions? Okay, seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Cassidy?
Aye.
Godding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Pearlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Seven, aye.
Motion carries. We'll move on to J1, action items, and J1A is the first reading of Policy 4040, Social Media Policy, and I believe Mr. Ray will be speaking about that.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to bring one more policy in front of you. Policy 4040 was brought to the Policy Committee at the last board meeting, and it's gone through first reading, but we had some changes again, so we pulled it off of the first reading and brought it forward to you as an action item. 4040 has a couple of changes in, and they are highlighted on the board agenda. Page one, some grammatical changes with the and employees in plural, or possession, I'm sorry. And then we added on page three, in red, the Social Media Policy Regarding Political Endorsements, which refers back to 48, Policy 4018, which provides a little bit more specificity. But those changes are as much different enough that we felt we had to pull it from first reading from the last batch and bring it to you again as first reading.
All right, is there any discussion or questions about the first reading of Policy 4040? Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Godding and a second by- We have a motion by Mrs. Godding and a second by Mr. Snow to approve the first reading of Policy 4040. Roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Godding.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Pearlman.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Cassidy.
Aye.
Seven I.
Motion carries. What we do is always, it is on there, we, this will come back for second reading at our next meeting unless there is a motion to waive the second reading. Seeing none, it will come back for a second reading actually at our first meeting in December since our next meeting is a workshop. We will then move on to our information items, and first up is J2A, which is Transforming Kindergarten.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Got it. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, President America, Vice President Snow, members of the Board of Education, and Superintendent Evans. We are so excited to be here tonight to talk to you about an exciting project that we've been working on with a fabulous group of teachers and staff. This is about creative thinking, rigor, academics, the joy of learning, and a quest for excellence. So I'm going to start by introducing you to Luisa Palomo, and she is a dual-language kindergarten teacher at Liberty who's been with our district for 14 years. She's been recognized as both a Buffett Award-winning teacher and Nebraska's Teacher of the Year, and the part I want to highlight there is she's the only early childhood teacher in Nebraska to win that award. So that was very, that's a big deal for the early childhood team. There we go. And that also highlights for you, early childhood goes through third grade, just, I'm going to keep pushing that out there. She's worked closely as a teacher leader with our new teachers for the district, and she's active in working with families and in the Omaha community. She has her master's in administration and endorsement ESL, a math specialist degree, and she's completing her early childhood endorsement.
And I will introduce Donna Dobson. Donna began working for OPS in 1984, and she's held a variety of positions, pre-K teacher, kindergarten teacher, assistant principal, principal, and for the last eight years, she's been the Director of Elementary Education and has been extremely supportive of classroom teachers, which is why I approached her with this project four years ago. And you're my clicker, right, Donna? Donna and I are trying to talk really slow because if you've been to my classroom, I teach with five-year-olds, and so we go really fast all day long. So give me a signal if we're going too fast. So, and Donna clicked already. So this is a fun picture of our first meeting for our Transforming Kindergarten Project, and we started this, you have a timeline, I think Matt probably passed out books for you. We flagged a timeline page. We've been working on this project for the last four years. We started in November 2013 at an early childhood conference sponsored by UNO, and a lot of OPS teachers were there, and they were feeling like their voices weren't being heard. And Donna was there and said, "I'm here, I want to hear your voice." And so I approached Donna with a team of 10 other teachers from around our district and asked if we could really sit down and think critically about what kindergarten should be looking like for our little ones and how we could work in collaboration with our district. So do know that you have the timeline, it's up to date as recently as this fall. We're going to go through different pieces of it so that you know, and you're welcome to keep those. We have given them to every single kindergarten teacher in the district at our curriculum days this year, and we're giving them to anyone that wants them. So we're very excited, you can tell, about this.
So as we talk, when you think about talking about play, we want you to know there's research. It's not just play. So I've got my card of books, if you want some reading, just let us know. But I'm going to talk effect size for a minute. Now, you've got a handout that looks like this with a chart on the back, and I'm going to give you a super short explanation of effect size. And we pulled a lot of this from the research of Fisher, Frye, and Hattie. So we've got stuff, if you want to, if you want to see it, we're happy to share.
And just to interrupt real quick, if you don't want to write down, because Donna does talk really fast, on the inside of the back of your book, there is a list of all of the books that we've used thus far in our research.
Okay. So if you look at this, you see on this side where the chart is. Anything that would fall into the red as you dig into research, that is something that would have a negative effect on children. We don't want to do it. There's a negative effect. So that would be, if you look closely, it is anything that is below zero. The yellow is where students are going to achieve without schooling. So anything in that yellow area around the point one. Now, the orange is the typical effect a year of schooling will have on students. Okay? Now, what you would call the sweet spot would be point four and above. Anything that hits point four is significant. So as you look below, in the back of the book I just held up, there's like four or five pages of effect size. It's actually pretty interesting. But as you look in the middle here, you see play programs at point five. That means that if we are investing our time in high-quality play programs, we're going to move students a year or beyond what they would achieve without them. So point five is significant. We also provided for you some of the big names in research and play, some fun reading to put on your table by your bed. And we wanted you to know that there's also quotes on the back that you can review and read, but the point is that play is serious work, there's research behind it, and as I've said, it's really important that all the decisions we make for our students is based on research.
So you're going to hear a lot about what our project has been. There's a couple of different components, but the one that we've had to focus on the most right now is play because it's a thing that was lacking in most of our classrooms. And we're not saying, as Donna alluded to earlier, we're not saying it's a free-for-all, kids are hanging from the lights, it's crazy town. It is not that at all. And you'll see if you come to any of our kindergarten classrooms, it's high-quality, purposeful play that we're implementing in our classrooms.
And I'll jump in right there and say, if you think about reading, see, we do this a lot together, I feel like, okay. So as you think about play, years ago in reading, there was a pendulum that swung between phonics and whole language. And we said as a district, we're balanced literacy, we're in the middle, we're standing on best practices. What happened with play was, we had play back in the 80s, and they said, "Every classroom's going to have this by the 90s, it's going to be everywhere," and then No Child Left Behind came, and everything kind of came to a halt. So our practices changed, but what we are saying is, we're basing on research, we're standing in the middle and saying, "Best practices say this for our students." So just know that's part of our thinking behind it.
Right. One of the quotes that we have up on the board right now is by Sam Meisels, who's from the Buffett Early Childhood Institute, and if you ever have time to hear him speak, he's phenomenal, and he's known internationally for the work that he does around early childhood. And this was a quote that he gave this summer, "We are wasting time and resources, and we impair healthy brain development when we ask kids to do things that are not developmentally appropriate." And it's something powerful that we think about all the time because what happens in our classrooms is done with the best of intentions, but we don't always know the research behind it. Now, we have these great supports in our own Omaha community that are telling us what is best for kids, and they're giving us research. He also works very closely with James Heckman, who's an economist through the University of Chicago, and he is also a professor of law, and he talks more economically about investing for children. And the stat used to be $7 was our, you know, in what we put in, and now it's up to $13 of a return. So we really need to be acting very thoughtfully and very purposefully early on with our young people. How do I advance this? This is not like my classroom. Okay. So we mentioned earlier, there are three big aspects to our Transforming Kindergarten Project. We know that we have amazing instruction happening in our buildings right now. We have a lot of support from our OPS central office. Our supervisors have been very helpful in making sure that our instruction is streamlined across our district. We are doing amazing things with guided reading, we are thinking about higher-level math. We also know that we have great classroom setups that we're thinking about what our kids should see in their classroom every day. They shouldn't see a Pinterest-perfect classroom. That is not real life. Our classrooms should be reflecting our children. And so we knew that we were strong in those areas, but the area that our teachers asked for the most support in was purposeful play. And again, going back to the whole important part about this project and why I'm involved, this is a project that responds to teacher need and teacher voice. And teachers said, "We want to be able to put more play into our classroom, we want to do the things that we know happen during play." So for the last four years, we've really worked hard on purposeful play. You have on the back of your book, a look-forers document.
And before she moves on, I want to point out some new vocabulary for, for some of us. You see at the bottom, it says developmentally informed and rigorous. Back in the day, it was called developmentally appropriate. Now, the language that we use is developmentally informed. You're making decisions for your children based on what's best for them and what you know as a professional, and it is rigorous.
And that's something that our teachers were really, really intent on keeping. They did not want kindergarten to be the new pre-K. They wanted that balance of high expectations, rigor, still preparing kids for first grade and second grade, but doing it in a way that responded to children and what they're able to do. So the very first project that our team of teachers did, and I should say, we had teachers representing all demographics of our city, we had teachers representing all lengths of time, we had a first-year teacher, and we had a teacher who's taught for 28 years. And we met every month, twice a month, to really tear things apart, and then we would invite the entire district to us. So this, everything that we've done throughout our whole project has been very transparent and has, has had feedback from everybody. The very first project is this look-forers, which is on the back of your book, and it summarizes those three areas that I told you about. Teachers put in there what they thought should be happening in the physical environment. They talked about what instruction should be looking like with our district-adopted resources, and we had it externally reviewed by UNO's Early Childhood Department and by the Buffett Early Childhood Institute. And Donna's department has been very helpful and very patient with us in being our eyes and our ears and reading through our documents for us. So we put this together, and they, we got feedback and we tweak it, but there is one tweak that Donna should tell you about that she refused to change, which I love.
Well, we, every year, we do get feedback on this document, look-forers, because we, kindergarten teachers said, "I want my principal to know what to look for. I want the math coach to know what to look for." So that was the purpose of this, and so we continue to tweak it. But in the box that says engagement and communication, it's the second bullet, it says children and adults are happy and look forward to school. Someone said, some of the input was, "How are you going to measure that? What are you going to do with that?" And I can't, at that point, I looked at Luisa, I said, "You know what? It is critical that our children and our adults are happy and look forward to coming to school." So it's still in there, although I can't scientifically measure it, it's still in there as a look-for. So that's the explanation on that one.
So that's our kind of funny part. And I will say, we've been presenting this to our kindergarten teachers for the last four years, and this year, for Curriculum Day, we did it, and it was a session that every single kindergarten teacher came to. And, you know, five, 10 years ago, the kindergarten teachers were not an easy bunch to deal with because we would sit there and say, "Well, how is this appropriate to kindergarten?"
And we can say that because we're kindergarten people.
Because we were kindergarten people.
It's with love.
Yeah. And it was just, we were a crabby group. And then after we left Curriculum Day, after presenting two days nonstop, a day before our school started, I said, "Donna, we set out to transform kindergarten, and we've transformed teachers. They're so happy and empowered, and they want to do all these great ideas." So this document was just kind of our first big start. And again, like Donna said, it was not meant as a checklist for teachers, but to tell everybody who doesn't live in the wonderful world of kindergarten what should be happening with us.
So when you think about that, some of us naturally can set up a room and talk about play and what should happen. It's not just putting a tub of Legos out on the floor. As you look through this book, what we did is, we took all the state standards, we took all of our district-adopted resources, and we lined them up for teachers because teachers do not have time to do that type of analysis. So we put it all in here, we put questions in here. What are the higher-level questions that should be asked? What's the academic vocabulary that should happen? But the piece that falls to me was, how are they going to fit that into the day? So we really looked at the schedule, and we dedicated 60 minutes of, of a school day to play. And what that means is, 30 minutes, the teacher is working with students and doing interventions, doing small-group work, LLI, math small groups. The other 30 is there so that teachers can interact and the paras can interact and ask those higher-level questions, because if you dig into research, it will tell you that what moves students learning higher, and especially language learners, is the adult piece, and we're challenging them. I, I like to point out that we don't know what jobs our kids are going to have. Our kindergartners now, we don't know what the jobs will even be, and they probably haven't been invented. But we need, we need workers who can think, who are creative, and who can get along with people. So that's part of this.
Yeah. Today, we just had some administrators, future administrators from the University of Nebraska at Carney, and they were visiting our classroom, and one of them held Donna's similar position with Lexington Public Schools, and she said, "I can't believe that you guys are devoting an hour of play and that every kid is able to talk about what they're doing and use our higher-level questions." So those questions are provided for you, as Donna said. The other thing that we really wanted to give our teachers, because we didn't want this to be another thing that teachers felt burdened with, and so we have reiterated at every step that this is a journey, and it's a journey towards empowering our teachers and our students to love school and to make the most of every minute. And so we put together a curriculum guide, which is now what you have. Like Donna said, we aligned it to our state standards. We were fortunate enough to have the support of the curriculum supervisors who did the research, because teaching full-time, I don't have time to dig into the research. But it was unique in that they collaborated with us every step of the way and asked our teachers, the ones who are in the classrooms, for feedback so that every classroom teacher has this guide to help them. They're not having to, again, log on to the internet or purchase things on Teachers Pay Teachers. Ideas and activities that we already know are high-quality are provided for them. And then we have questioning. We know that if kids can answer higher-level questions, they're going to be great readers and writers and thinkers, and that's what we want for our children. And then I alluded to earlier, our curriculum days. We started out making our curriculum days about theory and research, and our last one was an overhaul of saying, "You tell us, tell us what you want our next steps in transforming kindergarten to be." And anytime that we've put things out there, we've had 75, 100 people show up, sometimes on the last week of school, on their own time, show up because they're so invested in this project.
So they actually, the teachers planned the curriculum day, we had them come and meet, and they set up the agenda, and then we filled it in. So they told us exactly what they want a curriculum day to be, and that's what we provided.
Absolutely.
Okay. So when you think about this, it's a district-wide initiative. It's for all of our kindergarten classrooms, it's for all of our teachers, but we know it's a journey that each teacher has been asked, "Take one thing and start there." It's overwhelming. If you look at this whole thing, it's overwhelming. Take one thing and start there, let us know what you need. But as I talk about it, and Luisa and I, we work on planning and doing these things, I think it's an equity issue. Every student in our district deserves the best research-based practices, and so we are supporting teachers, and we're going after that, all in the best interest of our children. Some of this work, people have been reaching out to us. We presented at the Buffett Early Childhood Institute PD for All series that they had. We have worked some with Boston Public Schools, Minneapolis has some work going, New Jersey has some things. So it, it's an exciting piece to be part of the leadership in this.
And I work, just from my history of being a teacher of the year, I work with teachers all across our nation, and they are absolutely amazed by the work that we're doing around play, but also around collaboration, that teachers are able to be teacher leaders without having to leave the classroom and affect change at a district level. This summer, I presented in DC, and our entire topic was play as a social justice issue, understanding that all kids, regardless of where you grow up and where you go home to, deserve access to high-quality, purposeful play. So OPS is really leading the change in our nation, which is fantastic and something that I'm extremely proud of.
And as you think about it, we, we talk about communication, we will talk to anyone who wants us to. I get invited out to schools to grade-level meetings, staff meetings, we're basically happy to go anywhere. We've also provided training at our elementary instructional leadership network, which is our assistant principals, our SSLs, our literacy coach, math coaches. So if I'm at that meeting, I can say out loud to this group, who, none of them really have early childhood backgrounds, and I can tell you, at the time when I was a principal, there were only two of us who had early childhood backgrounds. We're sharing this PD, I can say, "Early childhood focuses on birth-through," and the whole room says, "Third grade." So as we think about this, some of the quotes that you will read, it does point out that these best practices, in order to sustain quality early childhood, we need to keep it going through third grade. I'm not saying we're moving play to first grade, second grade, third grade, but I'm talking about best practices and how we know kids learn, hands-on, language development. So that's part of our communication.
Yeah. We like to say that we shouldn't treat a five-year-old as a shorter version of their future self. They're a five-year-old, so we should let them be five. They're not a fourth grader, they're not an eighth grader, they're five, so let's live in the moment with them. So our next steps, because we are constantly thinking what we're doing now, but what we could be doing in the future, so we want to continue on our play journey and working in the moment with them. So, our next steps, because we are constantly thinking what we're doing now, but what we could be doing in the future, so we want to continue on our play journey and working with our teachers. And what they ask, our goal, just for me and Donna, is to have math and literacy in every single area of a kindergarten classroom. And we know that in the classrooms that are doing it now, our kids are loving it. They are absolutely stronger readers and mathematicians for having it embedded throughout their day. We also want to share our talent. There used to be a Nebraska State Kindergarten Conference in Carney, and it was poorly attended, and they no longer do it. And so, we've thrown around the idea of hosting our own conference for kindergarten teachers from everywhere to come, similar to our ASL conference, where we're able to charge non-OPS people to come, but to use our own teachers who are so talented and have so much to offer. And then, we want to continue to respond what our teachers ask for. We don't ever want this to be something that they say, "Well, TAC made us do this," but instead, something that they know that current teachers in the classroom are advocating for. Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Board members, do we have questions, comments? Mrs. Godding?
Well, I would just say, thank you so much for working on the play portion. When I was trying to figure out where our oldest was going to go to kindergarten, I chose to visit my neighborhood school, but I also chose to visit other public and private schools to get an understanding. And I remember coming home and telling my husband, "Our best choice is right here in our neighborhood, because there's more creativity and play happening there than anywhere else." And Mr. Ray may say, "I'm not a whole lot of fun," so he knows that I, I can give math problems at home. I wanted my kids to have a really positive kindergarten experience. He's abused me a little tonight. So, I think, you know, I was very blessed to have Joni Beller and Carrie Cortina for kindergarten teachers, and I don't know that, you know, so I didn't, my kids did not miss out on the play and creativity portion.
Yeah.
And I'm very, very thankful for that. But I'm glad to see that we're doing that district-wide, because having, a long time ago, visited kindergarten classrooms to try to figure out where to put my child, it doesn't necessarily happen everywhere.
Absolutely.
And I clearly was able to see that, thinking, "Oh, I wanted my child to be in a really rigorous environment." And then, recognized rigor without fun is not the way we need to be. He wasn't going to be in fourth grade, like you said.
Absolutely.
And so, you need to have them where they're, where they're at, and they're five and six, and they need to have some fun. So, thank you so much, and good luck as you work on building maybe a coalition of kindergarten teachers around the state.
Yeah, absolutely.
To understand the importance of this.
Thank you.
Mr. Snow?
Thank you too for presenting tonight. It's always refreshing to have very colorful and energetic people in front of the board.
We tried to tone it down for you guys.
I appreciate everything you do, and I would echo Ms. Godding's comments. When a child comes to Omaha Public Schools, the first interaction is with their kindergarten teacher, and that will be the impression on them for the rest of their life. I remember my kindergarten teacher as if it was yesterday, and, oh, yeah, I do, actually. But one of the things that's really interesting about this is your next steps in talking about equity and how do we take this to first grade, second, and third grade. And so, my question to you, what do you need from the board and our support to continue this movement that you guys are already doing?
Do you want to go first, or do you want me to?
Go ahead.
So, I guess my first thing would be, just to support us, to come into our classrooms and see what's happening. Our next steps that we're going to try to do are set up a couple model classrooms around the city. Again, we don't want to focus on money, we don't want to focus on budget. We want teachers to be able to do things in their classroom with things that kids already love. They love boxes. So, what can we do to really set up these model classrooms so that the community can come in and see? Right now, we are trying to get a lot of our teachers ready on how to advocate for play and how to defend themselves in case somebody says, "You're just playing." But instead, to have our teachers, and I would say, all of our kindergarten teachers are very well-versed in now saying all of the amazing things that are happening, but visit our rooms and become an advocate. When you see play happening, share it, celebrate it, talk to the kids, and really be an advocate for us.
And I think the other piece with, with that is, we're trying to be very, we're kind of protective of our teachers too, because you may have someone who's used to being very structured, and the idea of branching out into this type of, a little bit more freedom, it is more challenging than other places. So, that's why we're a little bit protective, knowing that everybody starts somewhere, and we're trying to bring everybody along together. So, as long as you don't go into a classroom and, and because it might not be exactly what we're talking about, just know it's a journey, and we're going to get there, but it, it's baby steps.
And then, we do have plans to go to first and second and third grade, and really just think about the philosophy, and really thinking about changing that our kids shouldn't be sitting still all day. As adults, we hate sitting still, so why would we do that to five, six, and seven-year-olds? Why not let them learn the best way that they know how? And really, bringing more research and doing more, you know, professional development days and conferences around those.
Thank you so much, I appreciate you too.
Thank you.
Mr. Scanlon?
You guys had both mentioned equity within OPS regarding kindergarten and early childhood. Could you just expand upon that? What, what does that mean from your point of view?
I think, to me, it means what Ms. Godding was saying earlier, that you can go in one kindergarten classroom, say you were in my kindergarten classroom at Liberty, and I've always had supportive administrators and families, so I've always felt confident being able to do play. But you might go into another classroom that doesn't feel the same way, that they feel like, in order for their kids to get to first grade and to be readers, they need to sit still and do worksheets all day. That was my first concern about equity, that at different schools in our cities, kindergarten kids were not exposed to the same opportunities. And again, it wasn't because any one person thought play was bad or joy was bad, but everybody felt pressure from above, pressure to prepare our children for the next grade and the next test that was coming down the pike. And so, right now, it doesn't matter if kids in Luisa Paloma's classroom are having a great time, kids in every kindergarten classroom should be having the great experience starting school. Like you said, Mr. Snow, it's their first experience. We want them to love learning, so that when they're in the fourth grade and they have to take state testing, they already have that intrinsic love of learning.
And I think, when I think about it, I think about equity as getting every child what they need. So, you may be a child who, who's already reading before they even walk in the door. So, I want to be able to take that child where they, where they should go next and challenge them. But there may be other children who have never gotten their hands in to a really well-set-up art center. It, it goes back to every child getting what they need.
And I would add just one more thing on the equity piece. Knowing that a lot of our families in OPS come from high-poverty backgrounds, they don't have access to going to buy Legos or buying Play-Doh, and they don't have the luxury of time to engage in a high-quality play at home with an adult who's going to ask them questions and ask them to put things together and take things apart. And we want all of our children to have that opportunity. We want them to build things and break things, so that when they are grown-ups in these jobs that don't exist yet, they'll know what to do.
So, I guess with, with that equity and just knowing that we offer early childhood in certain areas of our district and others, I think we've tried to, where you pay for it, I guess, a total loaded question, are you guys pushing for district-wide early childhood education, or is that, I mean, is that your ultimate goal?
Well, how long do you have? No. First of all, we're starting with kindergarten, and we want our kindergartens to be the best in the country. So, that's where we're starting. And to me, that, that's where we're at right now. We know, there's so much research, you don't even need me to talk to you about it, on the importance of early childhood for our threes and fours. And so, funding-wise, yeah, that's my dream and wish and hope. I would like every child who comes to OPS to have that opportunity. I also know the realities of funding and all of those pieces, but yes, that would, that would be our hope.
Yeah, absolutely. Having taught for 14 years, there's a definite difference in my students' abilities who enter my classroom having had an early childhood experience. Again, we can't change that money budget before us, so what we can control is what's happening to our kids that we have right now, our kindergartners.
And then, I'm going to jump in again and point out, early childhood is through third grade. So, we're going to keep focusing on these best practices and control the parts that we can control.
Absolutely.
Well, I thank you for everything you do, and I would just continue to encourage you and OPS to work with all the generous partners that we have with the early childhood learning. We've got the Sherwood Foundation that has done a lot of early childhood centers around, and I know a lot of those are focused in the, in the high-poverty areas, but early childhood is, across the board, a very important thing that I think that, I appreciate your guys' energy, because I don't have the energy that you guys have, but keep it up, and I thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you.
I want to jump in and thank you both for presenting tonight. It's been fun. I've kind of been seeing this happen from the other side, so I think as a daughter of a kindergarten teacher, I sometimes live in that kindergarten world too. But it's been, like, this has been really interesting, and I thought, I really liked it, I was looking through the booklet you gave us, and one of my favorite books is in the resources area, which is Last Child in the Woods, because my whole undergraduate thesis was on informal science education. And in a way, I think that's, if we do get questions from people about, "Well, why are you letting kids play so much? What are they actually learning?" It is that informal learning that's happening. Like I know, Luisa, when we were in your classroom earlier this year, and kids were playing with those expandable water beads, it looks like they're just playing with water beads, but they're counting, and they're sorting, and they're learning colors and making patterns, and they don't realize they're doing that, they just think they're having fun.
Yeah.
The same thing happens with, like, your house center. It's not just the house center, it's a restaurant, it's a Vetrta office, it's a store, and so, you have kids role-playing and acting those out, but they're also learning the vocabulary and learning how to interact in different social situations, and they just think they're having fun, which is really, really cool. And I, something stood out to me that you said about the 80s, because I was a student in the district in the 80s, and I remember having centers and playtime in first grade.
Yeah.
And like you said, it is developmentally appropriate for our kids to want to get up and move around and play, because that's how they're learning. So, I'm really excited to see how we can keep this going and expand it on all the way through the early childhood years.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cassidy?
I'll be quick, because I think I could reiterate everything that everyone has said so far. Thank you for your enthusiasm, great presentation. I'm particularly excited about this. I have a four-year-old that will be a kindergartner next year, so I'm going to go back and make sure that my school's kindergarten teachers are hopefully implementing this. My question to you, though, is, you've got 20 days laid out. Do you anticipate this growing any larger and adding more days?
Absolutely, thank you, that's a great question. So, our district through our curriculum department has put together the first 20 days of writing, the first 20 days of math, and it's to help teachers who might be new teachers or learning a new curriculum really ease into the first 20 days of the school year. And knowing that a lot of our teachers had never had the opportunity to play, we worked with a Buffett Early Childhood coach who works at Liberty with us, to put together what those first 20 days would look like to ease into play. Most of the teachers, I will honestly tell you, read through it, they got great ideas, and they were able to start on day one. So, it's something that happens every single day in our classrooms, but that helped get started.
And I'll just add to that, because it is way more complicated to introduce a block center to a classroom of five-year-olds than you would think. You have to have a really careful setup, so that's what that is for. And we told teachers when we put this out, "If you already know how to do it, skip that. This is just for the folks who are new, or maybe someone who's never tried it."
And I will tell you, this last week, I visited Liberty, and I got to see Mrs. Paloma's class in person, and it's just as vibrant as she is in person. So, if you, if you need to, anyone, if you need to remember what and see in person, some good things that are happening at OPS, maybe to energize yourself, head on down to her classroom.
Absolutely, you'll love it.
It was a fun, it was fun to watch for a few minutes. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Perlman?
Just briefly, I wanted to thank you also as well. I just, real briefly, when I was in kindergarten in the early 80s in OPS, it was only half day. And now, I think we're really fortunate, my daughter just started pre-K at Harrison, and it's really been life-changing in just over two months. So, I just want to applaud everything that's going on in the district and your work, because it's definitely life-changing.
It's an amazing age.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Yes, all right, thank you. And like I said, we look forward to hearing more and seeing how we can grow and move forward and, and help other districts in the area improve their kindergarten as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to our committees of the board update, because we have not done that in a while. And first up is our newest committee, Board Governance, which Mr. Snow is the chair of.
So, the Board Governance Committee met last week for the first time, and it was, the gist of the meeting was really trying to get the committee to talk about, what do we want to set forth for our first things on board governance? So, we put, I'll give you the first two, professional development and also talking about a couple policies that we could implement or bring to the entire board in the next couple meetings. And I believe our next meeting is December, the 27th of November, I apologize. So, our next meeting is November 27th, and from that meeting, we'll be talking about PD, we thought, professional development for the entire board, moving forward in January would be something, a great start for the entire committee. Are you, you're looking at me like you want to say more, Mr. Ray? Go ahead.
No, I don't.
You do, go ahead. All right.
All right, next up is Budget and Audit Committee. Mrs. Godding?
So, on the Budget and Audit Committee, we met November 2nd and talked a little bit about the status of the audit. We'll be getting the audit presentation here in December, and they will share with us as well, but there were a few entries. Two of those were proposed by OPS, a couple of them related to OSERS, one to ESU, and then, I think the other one must have been another district one. There will be a new footnote in the financials related to GASB-77, which is related to TIF, it's a new requirement, that the amount of loss of property taxes be reflected in financial statements for districts. So, that's going to be GASB-77, which is a new footnote, just so everyone understands that. Typically, there's also a subsequent event footnote, and we did have a subsequent event or, that we were working through, which is the hailstorm that happened in the summer. So, it was quite a bit of damage to some different facilities. But the one thing that I want to really reflect on that's the positive, both from the community standpoint and from really acknowledging the previous board on this, was when we changed carriers or changed insurance agencies, we took the time to correctly value all the property that we had in the district, which had not been done. And had that not been done, we probably would be looking at some significant losses on our own. As it is, we had correctly valued everything, and we have a $250,000 deductible, and insurance will cover all of the work that we had. So, I think that is really critical. I know that was a big discussion on the insurance piece, but that was very important. We talked a bit about district cash flow. So, this year, revenues over expenditures came in at close to 29 million, which will go to the cash reserves. A couple of things that happened, transportation for '17 over '16 was actually $5 million less between those two years. We're also anticipating, hopefully, another $7 million savings this year. So, the difference between '16 and '17 was a $5 million save. A small amount, which I'm just going to point out, because I think it's kudos to Mrs. Kenoke, was that interest on investments in the past with the bond funds, it had been going into just an account at US Bank, not earning very much. Instead, she has put that money into the liquid asset fund and was able to pick up an extra $274,000 in interest, which I think is a very good thing. So, I want to give her praise for that. And with that, I think that's most of the information we talked about. We talked a little bit about bond cash flow, which she's going to be getting us some information on. She's also going to get us some information on where our cash reserves are right now. We talked about doing some potential audits with either Council Great City Schools or other areas to create, to look at more efficiencies that we can pull out of the district that maybe we haven't already done. I know we've done quite a few, but we're not all the way there yet, and so, I want to, Mr. Evans will be working on that, and we'll be seeing, hopefully, some more of that. And then, as we work through OSERS issues, we'll be talking about the process for that, and Mr. Evans will be bringing us more information, probably in the next month or so, on what that will look like and how the community will be involved in that process. So, I think that's it from the budget standpoint, unless anyone has anything else. Mr. Perlman?
I just have a quick question. Since this is my first year on the board historically, I mean, that's great news, to your $25 million more in revenues and expenses. Historically speaking, is that in line with what's normally seen? I mean, that seems about 5% of the tax. rate.
I would say Mrs. Kenoki did a great job of saying no this year, so that we could build back up that cash reserve, which has a significant impact on our bond rating. And as we get ready to issue bonds, it's really important that that cash reserve be back up there. I think last year, we had to borrow just a little bit from it, so we needed to pull it back up. But I'll let her speak. And transportation was a huge, just because of, what happened was, we had announced in '16 that we were going to make transportation changes. We hoped that we would start to see some savings, but we did not anticipate 5 million, which was great. And then we knew that this next, the year that we're in right now, we should be able to see some more. And so we're hoping for, I think, 7 million this year. So those, transportation really played a big role in helping us to get where we needed to. So that was even with the $12 million that we paid to the, for the ARC, for the OSERS.
Yes.
All right. The Policy Committee is scheduled to meet on November 13th. Do you have?
Just quickly, there'll be, there'll be another batch of policies coming. We can discuss at our next board meeting. And so, look for an update then.
All right. Americanism is going to be meeting on November 14th. Student Assignment Plan.
So we had another meeting on Student Assignment Plan, just because there's a number of moving parts here. One of those is the transition of sixth grade to beverage for the '18-'19 year. So staff shared with us a very detailed plan of what they're doing to prepare for that. I think, over learnings, as Mr. Evans has said, on how to do that well and how to make sure that staff is ready, recognizing that two-thirds of their students are new, not just one-third, because seventh grade and sixth grade are both new to the building typically when you do something like that. So it's, it's not the same as if you're a 6'8" building already and you're just transitioning in. So we talked about that a little bit. We talked about needing to work, as we move forward, with the new school across the street, on partner zone placement. We talked about Western Hills and Bell Ryan, is there, you know, being built and is everyone moves back in, and the capacity for those buildings being a little bit higher, what that looks like for the building and making sure that we're all set up there. And we also spent some time talking about what the future will look like if another bond is passed, as far as, you know, needing to set up boundaries for high schools and a new middle school and just making some changes and transportation changes and all that. So we don't really know, and we won't know that component until we get through the time when there's a vote, but we're starting a list of those things that we'll have to be thinking about. So I don't know if there was anything else that anybody wanted to add. All right.
All right. Next up, the Legislative Committee did meet last Friday, November 3rd. We're getting into that season where people down in Lincoln start to draft bills and start talking about priorities for the next session. So we talked about some priorities, discussed some things related to OSERS, and trying to get things in line for the start of the legislative session in January. And I would say, if you, if you do have any ideas, board members, of things that you think should be addressed legislatively next year, if you can let a member of the committee know, which would be Mrs. Gotti, Ms. Ryan, myself, or Mr. Perlman, so we can get those ideas and feedback to the correct people, that would be great. Do you have any construction manager at risk updates? No. Okay. CIBOC?
Yes. Well, we know that we are finishing up kind of the last major projects, as far as either putting them out for bid or for design. So we are in the last, I'd say, the last phase of the, of the early bond issue, as far as getting projects done. A lot of them are going to be completed by the end of this year, and a couple of them are going to be started next year. So we're on track with all that. Budget looks good. I did ask Jacobs and Dr. Turnquist to reach out to all the members of the CIBOC to try to, you know, as, as a project has dragged on for, I guess, two, three years, a lot of people have, you know, had other, other distractions pull them away from attending regularly the CIBOC meetings. So trying to bring them back in to, you know, kind of refocus on the end of the first phase and then also gain some momentum for the second phase projects that we've been talking about, doing some small, small group, community and small group board meetings. So just kind of trying to, you know, we've, we've been going through this for a number of years now. We're trying to, you know, kind of regroup and see where we go from here, community-wise and board-wise. So I think as a district, all the projects have gone quite well. I think the, a lot of communities are happy with the results of the first phase of the bond projects, and we'll continue on there. And I believe most everything is, is on budget or under budget and on schedule.
Perfect. Last up is Superintendent Search Committee and Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee met on November 1st, and we were putting on the final touches for the timeline that is on our website, as well as adding some additional tweaks to it. We have another meeting on November 30th, and from that meeting, we will be coming to the entire board and to the community on December 18th with the interview process and dates for the finalists, once we get later down the road. So everybody can put that on their schedule, but the committee's still working on that, as well as the interview process. Any questions? Thank you. Yes, sir.
I have an unrelated question. I guess it was from a committee earlier, the Americanism Committee?
Yes.
It's been on our agenda, and I know people have been meeting. What exactly is the purpose of that?
So, good question. The Americanism Committee is a committee required by state statute, that every school district in Nebraska have a committee that looks over materials related to social studies, American government, so reviewing curriculum to ensure it's aligned with state standards, reviewing materials that are used in classrooms. I think statute might mention something about making sure the pledge is being said and the flag is displayed in schools. And then our committee has also, you know, reviewed what's going on with the JROTC program and other programs related to American government classes. Do you have more, Mrs. Gotti?
Well, I was just going to add, and I think state statute only says you have to meet one time, but we had decided a few years ago to make it more robust and to ensure that we were completely following state statute and to really ensure that we were in compliance.
Most of this is with textbook adoption. So we, keeping history alive, all the history textbook adoption, as well as the economic, the new economic textbooks that came out, all went through the Americanism Committee. So just really having that review on how it really just, doesn't just tie to the United States, but just Omaha as well as Nebraska.
Okay. Thank you. I just, I heard it a couple of times, and I know that it had been touched on in the past, but I'm sure the public might not know exactly what that committee's purpose is.
Yes, very true. And as Mrs. Gotti said, there are a, I would say, a fair number of districts around the state that have a committee in name that has a meeting once a year and says, oh, are we teaching American history? Are we teaching government? Yep, okay, we're good. But we've, over the past few years, have taken that to the next level of, hey, let's actually review textbooks and do the things to have this be an actual committee, since we're required to have it. All right. Under receipt of reports, I do want to draw your attention. We have two reports. One is from the Purchasing Division that goes over the amount of money that they are able to save the district every year. And it is generally a very impressive number of what they're able to save us through negotiating, bundling packages together versus having individual schools go out and purchase things individually. So I do want to give a shout out to our Purchasing Division for the amazing work that they do every year. And our other report is our official fall membership report for the 2017-2018 school year, which is exciting to have those final numbers in. Mr. Snow?
Before I read this, every board member, please grab your paper weight on the way to closed session. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, and Legal Counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, and legal advice.
Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Neelis Brash is running.
And Connie Kenoki.
And we need to, oh.
If, if you can restate that to make it official, yes, please, Mr. Snow.
Okay, I can do that again. I move that the Board of Education go into closed session for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kenoki, and Legal Counsel. Pending, pending litigation, negotiations, personnel, and legal advice. Is that what you guys wanted?
Now is there a second? Second. Right. We have a motion by Mr. Snow and a second by Ms. Ryan. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please, Mr. Ray.
Scanlon?
Yay.
What was, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
A, yay, yay, yes. Uh, Snow?
I say R.
Aye.
Gotti?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Perlman?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Seven aye.
Motion carries. Let me remind the board that the purpose for closed session is for the protection of the public interest and for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of individuals to discuss with the Superintendent, Secretary to the Board, Connie Kenoki, and Legal Counsel. Negotiations, pending litigation, personnel, and legal advice. Let the record reflect that the board went into closed session at 7:39 PM.